All right, I'd like to call to order the April 26, 2011, meeting of the Newport Beach City Council. Madam Clerk, with roll call.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Rosansky is absent at the moment.
All right, it's time for clarification items on the consent calendar. Councilmember Dale?
None.
And Councilmember Curry?
No items.
Councilmember Selig?
I have none.
And Councilmember Hill?
Nothing.
Mayor Prochem Gardner?
None.
And I have none. And so I think we're ready for the first business item, which is parking meter demonstration and map of replacement meters.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilmembers. You'll recall just a few short weeks ago, when you approved a contract with Central Parking, we promised to come back with you with a couple things, including a map of where Central will approach the change-out first, as well as, we thought this was a good opportunity to do a brief presentation of how things work. So with that, I'll turn that over to Tracy McCrainer.
Thank you, Dave. Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. I would like to introduce, I'm Tracy McCrainer, your Finance Director. Evelyn Sen, our Revenue Manager, is to my left. And I wanted to have the opportunity to reintroduce Bob Camper. He's our Director of Municipal Services with Central Parking, and he will be giving the video demonstration and going over the replacement map items. In the first row is Timothy Downey. He is the Director of Operations with Central Parking. He is also committed to Newport Beach only, and someone who's busy looking at doing the transition. We have a new Rhett Hartsfield. He's the Assistant Manager, working with both Bob and Timothy, and he's actually a Newport Harbor High graduate, and had moved out of the city and is moving back. So he has a good familiarity with our community. Heather Flaherty is at the control. She's our Parking Lot Supervisor for the city, but she's also going to be our Contract Administrator, Operations, and Customer Service Liaison for the day-to-day operations with Central Parking. We wanted to talk a little bit about the first two phases. This is the best cost-benefit analysis for all replacement meters. These are the first two of many phases that we will be coming to you with, but this is the 1,600 spaces that we had talked about when we came to council. Phase one will be installed by May 1. That will be all of the single space, what we call IPS meters. We have an example on the conference room table, and we also have a booklet that we can hand out that talks about that. These are all the solar, credit card-accepting meters. They will be up and operational by May 1. And there's a little over 1,300 of those that will be up and operational, and we'll go over those spaces. By Memorial Day, we plan to have all the multi-space meters, and we have a short video for you today to see what they look like and to see how easy they are to use. Again, this is our first round of phases. Everything is going to be, this is going to be an iterative process with Central Parking. We're going to be looking at CDM. Right now, the Superior Lots and Coast Highway are not slated for transition at this time just because of volume and basically the best bang for our buck, but we will be looking at those, and eventually moving all of our single-space meters to credit card if the cost-benefit analysis works out. We actually have quite a few 15- and 30-minute metered spaces, so because of the merchant fees associated with the credit cards, those don't make sense to change over at this time. But, you know, as technology changes, we will constantly be looking at those. So let me turn it over to Bob Camper, and he is going to show the video of the multi-space meters, and then he and Heather are going to go zone by zone through what our replacement plan is for Phases 1 and 2. Hi, Bob.
Hello. Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers. We'll just go ahead and let Heather show you a short video of digital payment tech.
...space transaction process. Note space number, and go to pay station. Press start, enter space number, select amount of time, and insert payment. Collect receipt, retain for proof of payment, end of transaction.
Pretty easy.
Pretty easy. Okay. One item of note, on the receipt end of that, we have several options. We've worked with staff, and we've all come to the conclusion that we think it would be best, kind of like when you go to a gas pump, you, the customer will be prompted if they would like a receipt or not. There still is the option, if you all would like, to just have what you saw there and the receipt automatically print out, or the third option would just be, there is no receipt. But we felt that...
I think we wanted to ask if that would please the council. The prompting would cause less letter, less paper use, which would be less expensive, but it would also, it would automatically prompt, "Do you want the receipt?" And that, then the customer can decide whether or not they want that paper trail. So if that...
Let me ask a question. How does enforcement work, then? How do you know whether or not the meter is current on that?
Oh, sure. It's paid by space, not a pay-and-display scenario where you're displaying an actual ticket on the dashboard, if you will. So really, technically, no receipt is needed because...
So this is, these are for the meters that are on the individual parking spaces, so if you're walking by, you can observe that the meter either has or does not have time on it?
This would be for a multi-space meter, so it would control, for example, on the Palm Lot, where we would place new, two new Luke machines.
So how do you control for whether or not somebody's exited the parking space and somebody else pulled in?
Well, the customer wouldn't know if someone had already, still had time left on that when they go to engage the machine, but we would know if someone has actually paid for the space simply via pulling a report from it for our enforcement. So we would, we could pull a report from that, we'll know that space, what, how's that space going? 701, 710, 764 are paid, and none of the other spaces are, or vice versa.
So there would only be paper receipts available through the multi-space meters? There are, there are no receipts available for the credit card meters, the single-space meters, and those actually have a really obvious green light flashing when they're paid and a red light flashing when they're up. So when the parking ambassadors go by, they can easily see who's paid. On the multi-space meters, they will have their handhelds, and they'll electronically find out within the lot who's paid. So they don't look for the ticket. The ticket would only be for the customer's benefit.
And a customer pulling in would not know there is time left on an empty space?
No.
They just, they know they've got to go...
Pay the meter, or pay the space meter.
So that customer pulls in, then it's, then he starts all over again?
Yes.
Mayor Prochem Gardner?
Is there, I mean, for the amount of money we're talking about, does it, are many people going to need a receipt for their expenses? That's the only reason I can think of in this case, that you would want a receipt. Otherwise, it seems like it is. It's, we're asking for trash, and we're asking to waste money. So I'm...
And just knowing personal use, I prefer not to have a receipt, and I think that is why we wanted to set it as a default, and then avoid the paper and the trash. But if they needed a receipt, it would just prompt them right away to say yes.
I think default's the way to go, certainly.
Yeah, there will be some people that'll be distrustful that they're going to get credit for having paid if they don't have a receipt, you know?
Right.
Some will just ask for it for that reason, but...
And then they'll have that option.
And you've already broken it?
The city manager broke it.
I broke it first.
How's the cellphone transaction work?
When we deploy Park Mobile, it, for the IPS meter, it, there's an integration built-in between Park Mobile and the single-space meter. So as you can see, there's a red light flashing on the back of that. If someone was to pay for, and this doesn't go by space, this would be on the street for the most part. So if it's meter 55, and they pay for meter 55 for the sticker on the front, their Park Mobile sticker, it wirelessly engages the machine, and the machine would begin, would denote the time they've paid. And the back of that actually flashes green when you've paid it, which I think is probably going to happen here in a second.
This is the individual?
Yes.
That's the single space meter?
I understand how that works. It's not so different from what we have now, except it's easier.
And it has credit cards.
But for the multiple-space one?
We, we will get an alert on our enforcement handheld that a space has been paid on a multi-space meter.
Okay.
It's just a little different.
Do people freak out because they don't see anything, or they don't get anything when it's multi-space at first?
Well, they will be prompted if they wanted a receipt.
But I mean, what's your experience been? I know that I, I tend to get tense with new technology, and if I pressed all my things in and essentially nothing happened, I'd be going, "I did it wrong, I did it wrong. I'm going to go take it, I have to put more money in," and so...
Well, that's why I think it's good to give them the option if they'd like one, but by and large, people, kind of like when you go to a gas pump, that's probably, I know I don't get a receipt when I go to the gas pump, but, so I think it's pretty in line with if you went to go pay at a gas pump. And you can kind of see it's flashing green now because the, the meter was paid by a fake credit card.
We're also not installing the pay-by-sell at this phase. So right now, we'll accept, as of May 1, it will accept credit cards and coins, but we will be coming back to you when we're ready for that phase.
So this unit, we're going to keep all the individual spindles on the streets and just put this top on them?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I guess I was expecting, for example, in the median on Bell Bowl Boulevard, that we would have a pay station every so often, and that people, and we would not have the spindles on the streets.
You're still going to, yeah, you'd retain that for your, by a pay-by-space scenario? You'd have, you'd kind of come against two things. One, you'd either have to go ahead and, and paint or install numbers on the curb, which in that area might be a little tight because of the middle, the median. Or you'd have to actually take the existing pole, and you'd use that as your signage for what space number you're paying.
Well, all right. I guess the, the concept that I had in mind is the one like I've seen in Chicago, where it's, it's a pay station every so often that covers, and it's a pay-and-display approach, that covers parking for probably a half a block or even a block without the individual spindles.
In a pay-by, like, you could, you'd have to number all the spaces, which would add to...
Well, that's in a pay-by-space, but I mean, if it's pay-and-display, you don't have to do that.
Pay-and-display is not preferred. I know it is being used in Chicago, and...
Well, not just Chicago. I mean, I've seen it in other places.
Right. On-street, it's not the preference as far as how you would operate. On a parking lot, more so, but less, in an on-street scenario, both from a handing-off time standpoint, duplicating tickets standpoint, cost of paper, cost of pay stations versus single-space. It's, it's not the optimal. Also, as far as customer interaction and compliance and knowledge of how to use the actual equipment, the single-space is much more intuitive. People, there's not really any difference that what they've engaged currently to what they're going to do with the credit card, or that they could put a credit card in it instead of just coins.
And in our comparable cities throughout California, that, that's what they do as well. Even when they put them up, multi-space meters, if they had the single space, they use it for signage.
There's also one important point, too. You'll see a lot of times that the pay station will become a, become feasible if you do not have, if you're going into an area, let's say Corona Del Mar, there's no parking meters right now. So you don't have the pole there already. So it can be cost-effective then to go ahead and put in a multi-space unit because you're not putting in the pole. Likewise, you're not removing the pole, you're not, there's a lot of other moving parts from a capital expenditure that you're not having to undertake in the conversion. The other thing I would really want to note that's very unique to Newport Beach, which to me makes it a no-brainer to do it, is your, your residents and your stakeholders who buy $100 permits to park at a blue pole. We'd really get up against kind of a hard, rock and a hard place to denote those spaces so people knew they could park there without, if we removed the pole, quite frankly. I mean, we'd, we'd remove these blue poles, and we'd still have to let them know that they could park in those certain spaces on the street, which would make it fairly difficult in a multi-space situation.
On the subject of fake credit cards, are you confident that this technology will not be activated by somebody's AAA card or a library card or like that?
Yeah, I was going to say fake. We've, we've just programmed a maintenance card to activate the machine right now. It's, it's not, it doesn't have a modem in it to reach out and, and activate that card. But it's PCI-1 level compliant. Central Parking as a company is PCI-1 level compliant. We won't even put in a piece of equipment in a parking garage, a lot, or on-street unless it's gone through our IT department. It's got their PSS certification, and any other thing else they need for visa certification.
But again, these are our first two phases, and that, that's not off the table, Mayor Hen. Is, we, we can definitely, we want to look at our permit program, and as we're moving this out and becoming, you know, credit card accessible, eventually cellphone accessible, you know, there's possibly other permit options available to our businesses and our community where we won't need those blue poles, and we could be looking at that in the future as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
That was my, maybe I was at a different meeting or something, but my understanding of it was we were going to do multi-space heads, and, and sort of the trade-off was for a reduction in overall spindles in the city. Some of the heads were going to be larger. Was that concept proposed at one time?
No, we are definitely going to have more multi-space meters with the Central Parking, but it wasn't an option to remove the poles at this time. But that is definitely something that we could look at in the future as the cost effectiveness and, again, the permit program as we looked at.
Councilmember Curry?
No, I'm, I'm...
Councilmember Selig?
Yeah, I, well, I thought it was pretty clear in the proposal we reviewed last time that there was just going to be a very limited number of multi-space meters, and they were mostly all...
It's about 10. Right, thank you. Okay. I think now we're ready to go through. We've broken down the metered areas in various zones, and Heather is going to steer, and Bob's going to talk about what's existing and what's going to be replaced.
All right. One, one important thing that Tracy had noted was, this is obviously an initial Phase 1 and Phase 2 analysis where we looked at cost-benefit to switching over some of these areas. So if one area or multiple areas are not in the first phase, that doesn't mean they're off the table. It just simply means we want to go ahead and do some further analysis and make sure that the cost-benefit is there. So the first phase that we're talking about is going to be right in here, and that is West Newport. And you'll see that Zone 8, which is right up here, will not be included, and the primary reason that is that's Coast Highway, and those are a quarter an hour. So it's not cost-effective, obviously, to put a credit card solution in for someone paying a quarter to park for an hour. So that will not be included. However, the rest of the zones, 27, and you'll see Zone 27 kind of lots along in all those purple spots there, right there. Those are all the different lots that are along there, and it's basically split down the middle. A couple will have pay stations because of the size of the lot, and a few will have IPS, single-space meters, like you saw here. Likewise, all along those streets in 28 and 29, those will all have IPS meters. Those are all the ones where you see 2, 3, 4 meters at the end of every block going all the way, all the way down to almost a cul-de-sac there at the end. So those will all have IPS meters. So the only thing excluded would be Coast Highway right there. The next zone we're going to go through will be Lido Shopping, and that's kind of the gold-colored section right here. And what we're not going to have included is the Central Lot, which is 20, and 26, which is City Hall. So City Hall is fairly obvious. We have a lot of City Hall people parking there, so it doesn't make a lot of sense to put in the upgraded technology. And 20 is one we'll look at later, but we are going to, by and large, do then the entire Lido Shopping. And I, I guess I'll just note that there's 200 total spaces and 145 are getting replaced. So between the lot that is not being done, the City Hall lot, and whichever 30 and 15-minute meters are in the area, makes up the difference between the 200 and the 145. And on the West Newport, it was 205 total spaces, 178 excluding Coast Highway. Next, is Canary Village, which is all going to be right down here. And the Canary Village Lot, which is 31, is a heavily-used lot by permit holders. All the poles are blue in that lot, so there's really not a, a big cost-benefit to go hang on switching that over. However, the, of the 330 spaces there, 283 will be switched over, and, you know, sands the lot and any 30-minute spaces which are throughout there. That's where we come out with our 283 spaces. Right next to that is going to be the Newport Boulevard, 32nd Lot, and several other lots. Really, 5 and 6 are the two areas that will be completed, while 17, which is this street right here, 15, which is the lot there, and 4, right over here, will not be done. And the primary reason, again, is permit holders, blue poles, it's just not cost-effective, our first go-around. our first go-around to go ahead and place them there. 17, while it looks fairly attractive, it's just not seeing a lot of usage right now, but we're gonna continue to monitor that, see what it does in season, and see how that works out, and come back with you all on that. Of that, that has 345 spaces, 168 will be replaced, and that's primarily because we're doing 5 and 6 on that zone, and the lots are excluded. Next, we're gonna go to Oceanfront McFadden, so that's gonna be right down here. And that really, it has 425 spaces, 405 are done, and that's only excluding 30-minute and 15-minute zones. Everything else is done for, and it's for obvious reasons, you know, we're, those are some of the most prime spaces that are available, so you see Zones 9, 3, and 14 in there. Moving down to what's called...
Mr. Mayor, question?
I'm sorry?
What's gonna happen with Zone 5?
Zone 5 is included, so I'm sorry, should've...
So 3, 9, 14, and 5 are all included?
Correct. Yes.
5 is also, we kind of talked about that with 15, 6, and 4, see how 5 is also above 15? So that is gonna be replaced with new credit card accepting meters. It just goes all the way down to almost the McFadden area.
When you talk about not including the 15 and 20 or 30-minute meters, they will remain 15 or 30-minute meters, just the standard meter that we have today.
That's correct. Nothing will change with the time zones, the rates, or anything else as the streetscape is now. It's just not cost-effective to put the upgrade in at this time. Okay, from there, we're gonna move down, there we go. So, right all the way through here, down Balboa. Okay, so I guess I'll start out with what is included. So 24 is the 15th Street Lot, which is basically all of 15th Street right here and this little bit there. So that is gonna be upgraded with IPS meters. From the front end of the lot, which is closest to the pier, not lot, I'm sorry, street, which is closest to the pier, will be included, and the back end of it, which is closest to 15th Street, will also be included. The middle of that zone has shown a lot of permit use, or has shown very low occupancy. So we want to take a look at it in season and see where it comes back at. Likewise, following down 20, Zone 22 and 23, we either see high use of permits, as well as the school is smack dab in the middle of that area, and the teachers and faculty staff, they all have their permits to park for free. So it really kind of takes away from being able to put in the meters at this time to upgrade, from a revenue standpoint.
Do you, have you found in your experience that as you change, say, you do partials like that, that it does change the usage anyway? I mean, you're affecting behavior as well as the behavior that already exists?
Yes, we will. We, it's kind of funny, we were talking to someone actually from IPS today when we were taking apart some meters and getting ready for our installs, and they said that they'd actually had, and it'll be interesting to see how it plays out where we do something like that, where, I forget, it was one of the Stronach communities here, I wish I remember which one, but they had a, they had a lot where they had put meters, some meters, and they had ones where they hadn't. And the public actually learned where the credit card options were, and were going to those lots and lining up to try to go park in those lots, rather than where they only could go bring a roll of quarters to try to go feed the meters. So it'll be kind of interesting to see how some of this shakes out once we have that done.
Yeah, so in Sections 22 and 23, then, you will not be installing the IPS?
No.
Because I'll be, you know, of course during the summertime, school's not in session, and you get heavy beach crowd usage.
Right, this first summer, we will be partnering with Central to look at the next phase, and if we even see fit, we might even come back to this council in the middle of summer and say, "Hey, it might benefit us to put in several hundred." There's over 250 spaces in that stretch of 22 and 23, but just in the occupancy and the high permit usage. So even though the schools aren't in session, I'm thinking the blue pole permits, we'll just have to take a look at that, but it's definitely not off the table.
I'd be kind of interested, too, as we go along, kind of a rolling update of our revenues and, you know, as it's placed, what you see as the impacts.
We're both looking closely on a monthly basis, so we can, we can bring back frequent updates to council.
Councilmember Selig?
16 and 25, they're not included.
I gotta make sure I told you. That's back up. No, 18th Street Lot is not, and 19th Street Lot is not, that's correct.
Councilmembers, I know you have a busy study session and a busy close session. Are there specific areas you'd like us to continue to talk about, or one more?
Okay, I'll zip through, we're gonna get to the next zone here, which will be Balboa Pier and Balboa Business. And Zones 1 and 2 here, which is the Washington Street Lot, and as well as the on-street to the business, will all receive technology upgrade with IPS meters. There's a tote, and Palm Street Lot, which is not pictured here, sits right here, and that is Zone 35. That will receive, actually, Phase 2 in May, two Luke machines. So we'll be replacing, while there are two Rhino machines there now, we know there's been, you know, some challenges in the past, so we're gonna go ahead and replace those two, to alleviate those problems. But the rest of 1 and 2 here will all be IPS. 10 will have two pay stations, two Luke pay stations. 11, which is the A Street Lot, right here, will have two Luke pay stations, and 12 will have no upgrade currently because the machine that's there is working well. So rather than put money at a lot that's working well and does have a lot of permit usage right now, we'll leave that be and see how that, how that works out.
So you look at Corona Del Mar down the road. Will we also be looking, I know we had talked about Big Corona as potential for some areas of meters. Is that still going to be looked at at some point or not? Is that an idea that has been discarded? I'm looking at the city manager, because he was the one that suggested it.
No, I think we should look at that, yes.
And Central has expressed an interest in bringing us a plan for Corona overall.
Okay.
So the other areas on these maps, the Corona Del Mar areas, 34 and 30, and then the areas on Coast Highway, 7 and 13, they're not getting meters.
Not at this time, but they will be in another phase.
Okay, any other questions? All right. Do we have public comment on this item? Don't see any, all right? Very good. We'll move on. Next is a presentation on code enforcement. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, this is an update I'd like to give to you regularly about code enforcement activities, and including how, just kind of a summary of how we've moved code enforcement back to its more traditional place in community development. With that, I'll ask Jim Campbell to start the presentation.
Thank you. We're gonna go ahead, and Matt and I are gonna make the presentation. First thing, I just want to give you, folks, an update as to some of the organizational changes, but the presentation outline here, I'm gonna go over the organizational structures and some of the changes, and then Matt's gonna go over some of the improvements technologically, some of the responsibilities and duties, public outreach, and other current issues. First of all, as you may recall, the Code Enforcement Division was in the city manager's office, it was managed by a division manager, the senior code enforcement officer, three officers. We had administrative assistant, and we had also water quality. And given the changes to the organization, we've now moved it to the Community Development Department. It's basically a full-fledged division of community development. We have the community code enforcement supervisor and the three officers, and as you can note, we have one vacancy currently. Presently, they report to the Planning Division, I think that will change as the community development director is hired. I just want to kind of go over that. It is in a different area, the phone numbers remain the same. Matt is our newly-promoted code enforcement supervisor. He does supervise the two officers, and again, we have that one vacancy. So I'm gonna turn it over to Matt here and get into some of, the next item.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor Hen and members of the city council. I'm really excited about the opportunity to present to you today, because it's an opportunity to highlight some of the changes we've made to the division since the reorganization, and obviously to review some of our core functions and services that we provide, not only to the community, but also to other city departments. And finally, it's a chance to discuss some of the key issues and code enforcement hot topics that are relevant to the community and to city council as well. So, on the first slide here, we have some benefits of reorganization, and when we were transferred from the city manager's office into the Community Development Department, it's been a positive for us because it's essentially eliminated the silo effect, and not just from a geographic standpoint, that we're out in the trailers on City Hall and physically separated from the Community Development Department, but it offers us the opportunity to enhance our communication and information-sharing opportunities, and with the additional staff and resources in the Community Development Department, it makes us a more efficient and effective division. One of the, one of the changes we made was on the IT side of the House, and one of the common items of feedback that we would get from residents is, when we would issue a notice of violation, or administrative citation, or correspondence to a customer, and they'd come into City Hall and meet with a staffer, typically, they don't bring their notice of violation with them. And so it was hard for the staffer, whoever's helping them at the counter, to truly understand what the issue was, and so there was a lot of frustration on both staff, from staff as well as our customers, you know, trying to understand the key issue of the violation and what really needed to be addressed. So what we did in our GIS mapping system is we added a code enforcement layer, and as you can see, these are some of the topics, hot topics that we generally address on a regular basis. So there's like illegal dwelling units, property maintenance violations, use permits, and other zoning violations. And what a planner can do now is they can type in an address or a plan checker, and out pops the map shown here, and it'll show not only the code enforcement violation for that specific address, but it also shows all the code enforcement activity within that general location. So it gives them good, solid information as to what's happening in an area, and this is useful for staff members when they write in reports, and for management to kind of look at what's going on in a particular area.
If I might add, I think one of the issues that we had in planning is that people would come into the front counter and they'd start inquiring about an issue, or trying to resolve a violation. In some cases, if it's illegal construction, they're looking for a building permit, and one of the struggles that we had was that, you know, planners don't necessarily know what the remedy is, they don't know what the violation is. And oftentimes, the code enforcement's out in the field, and so rather than sending them out to the trailer, you know, "We can look at this, we can get the violation, we can see the notice." Obviously, we'll have Matt and his team as a backup, but this allows us to assist those folks at the front counter more readily.
So I have a question.
Sure.
Can, in a case where you have an owner that has multiple properties, can you query by entity, then?
Right now, this is by address, so you'd have to, you'd have to type in the address. But you can use permits plus to search by last name.
Okay, so you do have the ability then to search by entity name?
Correct.
And come up with anything having to do with code violations?
Correct.
Okay.
In addition to this general layer, we added some specific details. So when a planner, or a plan checker, whoever the case may be, wants to get some more specific information, as opposed to just the general, there's a case at a property, they can click on the property profile report and find some more information. So in this case, there's the case number, there's the current status of the case, whether it's a notice, citation, or whether it's open or closed, and then a description of what zoning or case violation is there. And in this particular case, it was a land use violation. And then there's a subtype that we break it down even further, so whoever is looking at this can have some more information. So in this case, it's an illegal dwelling unit. And then we add whether it's open or closed, and who's the officer who's assigned to this. So if there's a need for further information, they can contact us directly.
So from this description, we would, somebody that's familiar with this would be able to tell that there was a citation for an illegal dwelling unit at this location?
Correct.
Because that's not real clear from just an uninitiated person looking at it.
Correct. In this case, on the status, it would say notice, that means that a notice of violation was issued for this violation. So this use helps, like Jim said, the planners and whoever's staff members looking at this to know where the current status of that case is.
Okay.
One of the areas we also wanted to improve on was to make ourselves more accessible to the general public. And in looking at our old city website, our current city website, on that drop-down menu that says "I want to," there wasn't a little tab for "Report a Code Violation," and so it's frustrating to people to go on our city website and look and try to find a way to report a violation unless you're completely familiar with the city website. You have to kind of search a little bit to find, "How do I report a code violation?" And so by just adding a little tab there on the "I want to" section, you click on that, and it takes a customer directly to the code enforcement web page, which allows them to directly access Quest. In addition to this, we've also added an interactive officer map. So if somebody's new to the city, or maybe they're not, you know, used to filing a complaint, and they don't know who their code enforcement officer is, there's an interactive map that they can click on, and it'll show them exactly who the code enforcement officer for their area of the city is, that person's email address, and a contact number for them, and they can even click on the email address from that map and be able to send that officer an email. And we also added a frequently asked question page to our webpage, that's not up here on the slide, but we tend to get a lot of questions related to non-code enforcement issues, or code enforcement issues that are handled by other departments. And so we felt that it would be easier and helpful to customers when they are looking at our website, if they could find questions to answer, so they don't have to, you know, simply make a phone call to us, they can have that information at their fingertips, and it includes like contact numbers to different agencies as well. Lastly, we made some changes to permits plus. Here's a copy of an old administrative citation, and you can see, very difficult to read, gets faded really quickly. One of the, one of the problems with when staff is writing these is, you know, you fill out all the information here, fill out the corrections, and then you'd proofread it, and you find a, you know, misspelled word, or maybe something that wasn't grammatically correct, and you'd have to restart the whole process again. And on more complicated cases, it was, it was tough trying to squeeze in all the information into here. So what we did is we kind of automated permits plus, so now that we can print out notices of violations, administrative citations, and even some correspondence, so it's a much neater look, we can add more information to the corrections required, and it's easy for the residents or whoever we've issued a notice to or citation to read and have a better understanding of what's, what needs to be done. Another benefit of the changes to permits plus is that customers can now pay their citations online, as opposed to having to come directly to City Hall and pay with chat or cash or drive down. And as we know, people are using the internet more and more often, so this is an added plus where they can just go online and just pay their citations directly.
Matt, I might just want to add one item there, go back to that last slide. In the automation process, we've indicated in the system, you know, most of the usual violations that we run across. So the officer basically just selects that, and it actually pre-loads that information directly into the notice.
Correct.
So we don't have to worry about missing the right code section or spelling it correctly. So it's definitely enhanced our efficiency.
Moving on into our current enforcement strategy, and Council Policy K9 is kind of our guiding document as to how we are enforcing and our strategy in terms of enforcement. And there's always that debate as to how reactive and how proactive staff should be, and we've taken in the Code Enforcement Division a very balanced approach to being both reactive and proactive in terms of enforcement. And there's some definite benefits to being reactive, and one is obviously that we can target specific needs of the community. So, you know, if the community is concerned about a specific hot topic, we can respond to their, to their concerns. And it also helps, of course, with, based on the size of our division, we only have three officers in our division, so it's helpful when we can react to specific requests to code enforcement, because the community has certain concerns and they want to see those addressed. From the proactive enforcement side, we still are very proactive in certain violations, water quality being one. Obviously, we are still the first responders on water quality discharges. Some of the more obvious sign violations, especially during the summertime, where there's abundance of real estate signs and yard sale signs that are kind of left over the weekends. And of course, the property maintenance issues, and we still get a lot, a lot of complaints about property maintenance violations, and we're out there actively looking at enforcing those violations. The tricky part with proactive enforcement comes down to the fact that a lot of violations aren't apparent from the public right-of-way, and a good example of that would be like garage conversions and illegal dwelling units, where we really depend on people to complain about them, because a lot of them, you just can't see from the public right-of-way. Responsibilities of code enforcement, we are authorized to enforce all the provisions of the municipal code, and all of our staff are currently PC 832 certified. We're not, all the time, we're not the lead department on some code enforcement issues, for example... all the time, we're not the lead department on some code enforcement issues. For example, like animal control, you know, the animal control division will take the lead. But we definitely do provide assistance on, to all the various departments on code enforcement related matters. And of course, the catch-all is that code enforcement tends to get handed all the hot issues that are difficult to enforce. And we tend to find those issues, you know, given to us to take a look at. Some of the areas, we help different departments and I kind of just broke it down by department. With planning, we do a lot of the land use enforcement. So, that comes down to legal dwelling units, garage conversions, parking standards, and the list goes on in terms of zoning enforcement that we do related to land use. We do a lot of sign enforcement, both commercial and residential. We deal with a lot with like real estate and yard sale signs, particularly during the summertime. And of course, use permits. And we make sure that the conditions of approval for use permits, modification permits, outdoor dining permits and variances are followed and complied with. From the buildings, from building department, division, excuse me, we take a lot of construction without permit complaints. And mostly, this is related to zoning violations. So, for example, illegal dwelling units or garage conversions, there's usually a lot of construction that's tied into making these kind of violations happen. And so, we're out there identifying a lot of construction without permits. And of course, substandard housing. And typically, once again, you'll find these in these types of conditions and illegal dwellings or garage conversions where you have the lack of heat, the lack of good electrical wiring and plumbing systems and the like. And I wanted to show you a picture of some of the common violations we tend to find while we're out there. In this picture, you can see there's a bathroom that was added into a closet. And in this picture, here's a typical garage conversion that we find where they've sealed off the door. And now, you have your bed, you have your cooking facilities back here. And although you can't see it in this picture, but there's a microwave and refrigerator back here. From Public Works, as I mentioned, we are still the first responders on water quality violations. And we also assist Public Works with encroachments in the public right of way. And that could be anywhere from building materials left in the street to outdoor dining events. And here's a picture of a recent privated discharge and where there was a grease can that's back behind this trash enclosure. And A, didn't have a lid on it. And B, there was a hole in the bottom of it. And as you can see, the grease ran from the trash enclosure out into the storm drain. And we were able to get that cleaned up and relatively quickly. With police and fire, with the fire department, we do a lot with enforcement of nuisance related to overgrown weeds or dry weeds and vegetation, especially with the fire season coming. And we take a look at all the overgrown and dry stuff. With the police department, we work a lot hand in hand in enforcing unpermitted uses in residential and commercial areas. And one of the areas we've been working with the police department on is, of course, the medical marijuana dispensary issues. And there was a recent one in a residential area that with the assistance of the police department and the city attorney's office, we were able to shut down. And here's a picture of what it looked like inside that garage. And you can see it was lined all the way back and forth with plants. Some of the other code enforcement activities and responsibilities and complaints that we respond to are noise violations, like pool equipment, refuse requirements. That's obviously a big one, especially down here on the peninsula. We help out with business license enforcement, hours of construction, signs on public property, property maintenance concerns, vendors on the beach, especially during the summertime, and of course, people who scavenge through the trash. What I wanted to do is give you some of the pictures of some of, to show you an example of some of the cases we regularly handle. Here's a picture of a house that hadn't been painted for a while. And on the other side, there's a kind of, there's a huge hole on the other side of the house. I couldn't squeeze, get a good angle of it. But the house hadn't been painted for the longest time. Here's the after picture showing how nice that looks. Here's a common example of illegal dwelling unit. And obviously, we can see first glance, there's a kitchenette built into what looked like a closet. However, what this is, it was actually built into the garage. And so, they had built this little alcove and then added the kitchenette with all the plumbing into it. And after we were done, the alcove's gone, kitchenette's gone. And of course, the wall opened up so they can get into the main house and it's a single-family dwelling again. And then, of course, we have some of the unpermitted residential care facilities that we receive complaints on. And there was one on 29th Street that we assisted in closing down with the help of the city attorney's office. One of our goals with the division is to really reach out to our residents and to our homeowners associations. And our goal is to enforce through education. And our plan is hopefully that we can educate people on violations. So, A, we can prevent, but B, we can also educate people. So, if they're living next to something that they've always known just wasn't quite right, but they didn't know what to do about it or didn't know there was a code that regulated it, you know, we can help them out with answering their questions. And we've been going out to some of the homeowners associations recently, including the Corona del Mar Residence Association that we were at last week. And then, of course, we're putting notices out through water billing, Facebook, and eventually Twitter on relevant issues. And we're going to start using more and more of this as time goes on to address maybe a hot topic. Here's a recent example of a notice that went out there with water billing. And this addresses our RAP program, which is the Waste and Refuse Abatement Program. And these flyers went out in the water billing. We're hoping if we can, you know, hit up a lot of the residents, that maybe we can reduce some of the trash complaints that we get on a regular basis. Current issues, and this is always a fun one. And there's some hot topics that are, you know, the residents of our community are currently concerned about. And I just wanted to highlight some of them for you today. One, obviously, is residential care facilities, both permitted and unpermitted locations. Medical marijuana dispensaries, we've received a number of complaints on these. And we are working with the city attorney's office to address concerns on these. Illegal dwelling abatement, this is probably a standard code enforcement complaint that comes to us on a regular basis. And we've been working on these kind of complaints for a long time. And we've taken some steps to permanently abate illegal dwelling units so that we don't have these coming back habitually. Hoarding, this is actually relatively new issue that's been popped into our laps. And we're working with the Orange County Social Services Department to help out people who we've identified as, you know, being hoarders and living in a hoarding environment. And it's an interesting issue that staff has had to educate ourselves on recently. So, we're working hand in hand with an outside agency to find help for these individuals. Vacant homes with the mortgage meltdown.
I'm sorry, definition of hoarding?
Basically, hoarding is an individual who collects items, whether they're valuable or not, and just stores them. And it's usually caused by disorder. And so, you'll just see when you go into their houses. And I probably maybe should have shown a picture of an old case. But it's, they're usually just stuffed wall to wall with random stuff. Sometimes it's good stuff, but it's just complete storage in the house. And a lot of times, they're mentally ill, which is why social services helps out with mental health.
Where does that begin to deal?
You can call me, sir, and we'll get you the resources you need. Of vacant homes, as I mentioned with the mortgage meltdown, we are getting a lot more complaints. And this has been an interesting one for us because when you call a bank, you never get somebody who can help you. You're always passed along to the next person, to the next person, to the next person. And so, staff has been really working hard on this to establish good lines of communication with our banks and find the property management companies who manage these companies and get the properties cleaned up until they're sold. And there was one in Corona del Mar that it took us some time, but we were to track down a management company. And the place looks a lot better since we've been working on that. Refuge and property maintenance concerns, obviously, this is a huge concern citywide. And as I mentioned, we are really proactive on making sure that properties are clean and maintained, painted, and free of trash and debris. And of course, the gas-powered leaf flow ordinance, which staff has been preparing for, assuming it's passed into a lot, that we've established some plans to educate the public and, of course, enforcement efforts on that as well. With that, I have the opportunity to ask any questions.
Questions? Councilman Curry?
Matt, I just want to say thank you for the work you're doing in meeting with the community groups. I know you've been out to the Corona del Mar Residence Association and other groups. And I think it's important to let the neighborhood groups and community groups know what we're doing and who to call and how the process works. And that just sort of helps the whole city process work better. So, I commend you for your efforts in that regard.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. I had a couple of comments. I would hope that, I know we're under budget pressures and whatnot, but I would hope that we would keep this particular department staffed up.
We have, yes. If anything, I think it needs more resources.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I have a question about how we go about, though, our code enforcement in terms of policy. So, if we have a particular person or entity that violates a code, and we give them a notice that they violated it and give them a chance to correct it, then they don't, then we fine them. And if they don't correct it, we fine them hopefully more. And we continue to fine them up to a certain point at which it gets turned over to the city attorney department. Is that right?
That's correct.
And so, how many iterations we get the notice, how many times do they have to be fined before it gets turned over to the city attorney department?
Typically, we issue five administrative citations.
Five?
Actually, four, I'm sorry. Four administrative citations.
So, plus the first notice?
Correct.
So, really, it's five contacts and no action before it goes to the city attorney's office?
If I can add, it also depends on the case. And we take a balanced approach to this as well. So, there's some cases where, based on the history of the case and based on the circumstances involved in it, sometimes it goes straight to the city attorney's office. And we were having a discussion prior to this about possibly looking at our policy and making a decision as to, you know, what types of cases should go directly to city attorney's office. And maybe, you know, some cases, obviously, we don't need to send right of way because then we're loading up the city attorney's office. Or in some cases, that maybe we could handle in-house.
All right. And then, we've recently changed our charter and our ordinance, I guess, to allow more flexibility in terms of the nature and amount of fines. So, maybe the city attorney can answer that?
Yes, we updated our charter to allow for us to take greater action to enforce the charter itself. And the actual fines have been increased so that we can utilize a full penalty of enforcement mechanism we were previously limited under the charter. And it can give us more flexibility to achieve charter compliance.
Because sometimes we get in a situation where an individual or an entity just sort of scoffs at the fine and therefore, it really has no particular effect in terms of changing behavior. I have another question, though. Suppose we've got an entity that's a multiple property owner, and they commit a violation over here, and they get a notice, and they fix it. And then, they commit another violation, maybe a different code over here, and they get a notice, and then maybe they fix it. And another one over here. And this goes on and on and on, where there is notice, violation, fix. But when you look at it in total, you've got, in effect, a scofflaw, someone who doesn't care about regulations and maintaining compliance with our ordinances. Do we have a mechanism by which those kinds of violations accumulate at some point to a situation where it should get turned over to the city attorney's office? Or do we just go on and on and on?
In those types of situations, and we definitely look to the city attorney's office for a lot of guidance, especially when we have an individual or an entity for that matter who are multifaceted and they have different locations or properties that they may own or manage. We definitely work with the city attorney's office and lean to them on advice on enforcement matters.
Yeah. Because it seems to me that as a matter of policy and program, we still don't have that one really worked out. And so, did you want to comment on that, David?
I would just point out that current practice is that, of course, the goal of code enforcement is to achieve compliance. And past practice has always been sort of the five-step approach. And the goal is to keep working with the property owner to achieve success. But I do think there are times that, in fact, I've forgotten the word scofflaw. It's a great word. We get people who actually ignore the law or their remedies aren't sufficient. And so, we talk and we've been meeting actually to address that issue and to look for other ways to create flexibility to have more, shall we say, code enforcement punch too, so we don't be spending resources to not actually achieve successful compliance.
Okay. Mayor Protem Gardner?
The time between citations?
It's a case-by-case situation depending on the type of violation. Obviously, any new violation of the municipal code, each day that goes by is a separate and individual violation. But it depends on the nature of the complaint and what type of violation were occurring in mail time that all factors into times for compliance. But we definitely try to keep things within a reasonable time period to get compliance.
Because I think we do, I know I have gotten complaints about things from neighbors, but it just seems to have gone on and on and on. I mean, six months goes into nine months. And the fines build up. And I think that creates frustration for everybody. So, I'm hoping that we can, with the changes in the charter, that we can perhaps be a little more circumspect about getting on top of these people.
Will do.
Okay. Other comments from council? All right. We'll take comments from the public on this item. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Bob Rush, 25-year resident. I came down here today all fired up to deliver a three-minute speech that was specifically aimed at several complaints. I think I'll give it a rest tonight after hearing what I've heard so far. I think we're on the right track. I think that Matt Cozeline, my experience with Matt over the 10 or 11 years that I've known him is truly a gentleman, very well spoken. And I think I've been on both the receiving end and the giving end of Matt's work efforts. And he is gracious on both sides of the transaction. So, I applaud the promotion. I look forward to more aggressive enforcement along the lines, as Mr. Hen has kind of indicated. I'll save the specific examples and discussion for a later date. I'll give Matt a chance to work towards that with the understanding that we're all on the same wavelength without going through the specifics. I do want to mention one thing, though. I see in the later agenda for the city council meeting, there is a compliance review for development agreement for Hope Hospital and the Lutheran Church. And I want to just leave you with one thought. We've created over the last several years, a number of these development agreements. We all know what I'm referring to. These development agreements were created so that both parties, the city and the other party, would obtain benefit. When the city gives the other party benefit, and that benefit is hinged upon them following a certain protocol, and that isn't followed, that's different than enforcing it against a regular citizen such as myself, a regular resident. I think there's a higher duty to comply on these development agreements, a higher duty. That means when they don't comply and they receive that benefit nonetheless, we should be more aggressive than in an actual residential citizen setting. With that, I'm done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob.
Denise Overman, Newport Beach resident. I also would like to commend Matt Cozeline. I think he's been doing a very diligent and, in my opinion, those of others feel, an excellent job. I have just a couple of questions and really in line with what Mayor Hen had brought up relative to the city's policy and practice for progressive enforcement. How come the city does not actually progress to abatement when there are certain types of violations? I realize that, I know that the city has actually engaged in an abatement effort. And one example was brought up here this afternoon. But I ask the question, and then I would respectfully request that there is very clear path as to what types of infractions or non-compliance would be subject to prospective abatement and very clearly what the protocol for progressive actions would be. So, there's clarity for all and that the ordinances are administered with some consistency and fairness. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Other comments?
Mayor Hen and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Before speaking on this item, I would like to offer my sincere apology for a couple of remarks I made at the last council meeting regarding the changing membership of the aviation committee. Although I think our city has many problems, I don't think your commitment to public service or the city manager's integrity are among them. And I deeply regret any personal hurt that I may have caused. Contrary to what I so ineptly said, I've actually observed that your voluntary attendance at the committee meetings and other public events is actually quite remarkable. And the city manager has assured me that he would never present to you anything that he did not sincerely think was accurate and in our city's best interest. I believe him, I respect you. And although nobody asked me to do so, I would like to apologize. apologize. That said, the presentation about the most recent iteration of the Code Enforcement Division illustrates the kind of institutional problems that can arise even though everyone participating in the institution has the best of intentions and the highest levels of dedication. The problem here, as I've noted before, is that Section 601 of our charter wisely separates the structuring of our city government, what departments, divisions, and so forth it consists of, from its administration, that is, the day-to-day operation. The structuring is supposed to be achieved by you, the city council, through ordinance, which means a disciplined approach, such that before changes are made, there is a public debate, and so on. Unfortunately, over the years, a culture has developed in which the staff has been allowed to repeatedly reorganize itself with the council's blessing being asked for the most part after the changes have been made and rarely, if ever, memorialized in the city's codes, which causes them to be full of inconsistencies and conflicts. Without suggesting intentional wrongdoing on anyone's part, I believe that in the future we should try to return to those, to that wise and disciplined approach in which the merit of creating such things as a community development department and a code enforcement division are publicly debated, enacted through ordinance, going through a first and second reading, with the myriad of changes that need to be made to the municipal code to accommodate those titles and duties. That should be published in the newspapers and only after all that has been accomplished should it actually be implemented by the city manager. That, I believe, is a disciplined approach that our charter requires and inefficient as it may seem, I think it is a wise one for a city to follow. Thank you and I again apologize most sincerely for any personal offense that I, my inept remarks at the last meeting may have caused. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Apology accepted. I did want to, are there any other comments on this agenda item? Code enforcement?
Mike Branswazki, Newport Beach resident, Lido Isle. Thanks for inviting me today, Mike. It was very instructive. I wanted to come to help support Matt. I noticed he's got a new suit. Obviously, his promotion has helped him to dress better. He's a great guy. I would like to echo some of the comments the mayor has made and actually Mayor Protem, I believe it is, and Ms. Gardner regarding consistency of due process, regarding how different entities are treated under the enforcement process. It seems to me that when you talk about cumulative issues, my understanding of the code regarding enforcement, the enforcement process is that if there is a violation, each single day constitutes a separate infraction until the violation is corrected. If a person or an operator is notified of a violation at one facility, multiplication by the number of days until it is corrected applies. If there are multiple facilities where violations are noted, the multiplication gets geometrical instead of just linear. So, in that kind of an approach, I think the city has a considerable amount of leverage with repeat violators, as was pointed out by Mike, I think. The problem comes when there's inconsistency of application of the process. That leads to a precedent-setting situation where individuals or entities feel they have a great deal of liberty and some, as was suggested by another speaker, who are operating under a development agreement, may in fact feel liberated to be repeat offenders and multiple offenders. So I would suggest to the city that you, as you are doing, revamping the process of enforcement, look at the strategy of enforcement, look at where the process gets you to, and it should be consistent. So, the same number of infractions gets you to the legal department for the same type of violation. And when it gets to the legal department, there is a consistent methodology of addressing multiple infractions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, back to council for just one minute then. It seems to me that there have been some good points made here today and that I would like to ask staff to come back with recommendations regarding code enforcement policy and if necessary, ordinance. The comments that were made, I made the point about different kinds of infractions accumulating to a, in effect, a scofflaw thing and some way that we can tie that together, but the comment about development agreements being distinguished from individual infractions actually rang true to me, that there's perhaps some worthwhile distinction there that maybe, we may be able to draw, because development agreements are negotiated items, it's, in effect, it's a deal, it's a contract, everybody understands going in what their responsibilities are, and I think that does, at least from the standpoint of equity and quality, does argue for a different situation in terms of code enforcement. I would like to see us have another look at this progressive nature, the amount of time and the number of fines before it ordinarily goes, and then I am not aware that we have had, it's been rare, if ever, that I'm aware of at least, where we have levied fines daily like our ordinance, I think, allows us to. I'd like to come to a better understanding or a better view of that, where we will have something in place that we will enforce in a consistent way, that does allow for cumulative violations to become noticeable to the violator, you know? So, all of those things, I would, you know, if we can come back, and I would hope we could come back soon with some points of view on those issues, some recommendations. Nancy?
I think your remarks might be misconstrued. I just wanted to see if there's a clarification when you say that you're not implying that just because there's a development agreement that you don't have code enforcement and you don't have violations that are, that we follow up on?
No, quite the opposite. What I'm saying is, yeah, we do have violations and because it's in the nature of a development agreement, which is a negotiated deal, where everyone understands their obligations going in, that the enforcement become more strict.
Okay. I think it could have been construed the other way, I just wanted to have you clarify.
All right, well, thank you for that clarification. Councilmember Daigle?
Yes, also, I appreciate the responsiveness of code enforcement. I know the situation with the plants and the garage in San Ana Heights, got a lot of people upset over a weekend and things were just handled really swiftly and before you know it, the people and the plants were gone. As far as Mr. Mosher's comments about the restructurings, though, I also look forward to those coming to the council and really think we need to err on the side of caution and be very tight about how we're administering our charter.
Any other comments?
A couple of brief comments, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to also thank Matt and Jim and the entire team that works on code enforcement from Janet to Kathy and Kyle and David's office. I really think this is a group of folks that is really working together well and I appreciate that and, because it's not an easy effort, as Matt noted, you get all the problems that are really hard to solve and I really appreciate what you do for us there. I will second Councilmember Daigle's point about Mr. Mosher's comments that indeed we do have a, while this isn't the order Mr. Mosher suggested, I think his order is better. We are going to come back to you fairly shortly here with an ordinance that realigns the codes with how we're structured today. And then I, a quick question maybe for David. Ms. Overman talked about progress, where we've ever progressed to abatement and I think we're doing that on the Harbor Island Drive home potentially.
Yes.
But there, I don't, there aren't other ones that come to mind unless Jim or Matt, if some come to your mind. Certainly in weed abatement issues, we do, we know.
Dover and Coast Highway comes.
Dover and Coast Highway came close, yeah.
What I would also comment on is that we get abatement of violations without necessarily everyone noticing it, so on a weekly basis, you know, just a routine contact that we do in the field might lead to, you know, trimming those weeds and so, you know, they don't even necessarily progress to notice a violation or administrative citations, those are the ones that are just more the problem children. So, you know, we've got numerous examples where we've got success out in the field, it's just not documented. And Matt can augment that if he wants to.
If any come to mind, Matt, just, I think Ms. Overman's question was where have the city directed an abatement action? And I only can remember a couple of things where I think, as Jim noted, we came close and then they ended up abating on their own.
There was a number of houses on the peninsula that we've been pretty close to, to coming to the abatement, but we've been able to work with the property owners to correct those violations and as Jim mentioned, on a daily basis, we tend to, we do abate a lot of violations, you know, through simple conversations with people and so there's only that, I don't know, maybe five, 10% of cases that, that tend to reach to the top and come to the forefront because of, you know, their sensitivity and because of, you know, just, just the nature of the complaint. So, on a regular basis, though, most of the complaints we, we handle are resolved either at a one notice of violation or even one administrative citation.
My personal belief is that most people do want to do the right thing, so that's good. Then finally, I'm not sure if the council has any further direction for us on if we are to come back to you with a different, say, a fine schedule. Right now, we top out at 5,000, sorry, 500. Arguably, we could come back higher than that. I think that's my intent. I'd probably go up to 1,000, but if you, if any in the council feels strongly otherwise, that instruction would be helpful.
I'll just speak for myself. I'd like to see it in combination with the, this issue of repeat violation and fining for repeat, I'd like to see the whole structure before I made a judgment about the individual fine.
Okay. So we'll come back with our best recommendation and let you have at it from there. Thank you.
Okay. I think that's it on that one then. Thank you. Matt, thank you. I'd echo the comments that you really do a good job. It's hard to be the bearer of bad tidings so frequently and still maintain a good positive viewpoint. Okay, that's the close of the regular items then on current business. We do have public comments, an opportunity for public comments on non-agenda items or closed-session items. Do we have any public comments?
Jim Mosher, Newport Beach. Without meaning any personal offense to the city attorney, as a concerned citizen, I feel obligated to object to Agenda Item 2A, which is described as a global status report on all the litigation currently involving the city. By noting on the agenda that no action will be taken, the city attorney has insulated you from the possibility of prosecution for knowingly participating in improper closed session, but that does not make the meeting a proper one. California's open government laws allow the council to discuss legal matters behind closed doors, but only when the information to be presented, if publicly disclosed, would prejudice the city's prosecution of a case and even then, only if the precise case to be discussed is publicly identified. Neither of those standards seems to be met here in the current notice for the closed The number of court cases the city is currently involved in, where they stand and how much they are costing, sounds like a matter of great interest to the city's residents and taxpayers and one that could be presented here in open session. I suggest the council consider asking the city attorney to make his presentation now before you adjourn to closed session and if you do choose to hear it in closed session, please ask yourself how these cases, whatever they may be, would be prejudiced by public disclosure of the information you receive. Thank you.
Anyone care to suggest a different way to proceed?
I just would like a reaction to that.
Your, what's scheduled before you is a SaaS report of all pending litigation. You're entitled to review all pending litigation or any pending litigation under the government code, specifically 5495-6.9A. It's existing pending litigation. It's all public record and everything that's, that's, that's before you in that closed-session report is public record as to the nature of, or the items discussed. There is, however, discussions inside that report of an attorney-client nature necessary to give you the status of the litigation, where we're going, what the, what the plans are. All having been said, that type of discussion is fully protected by the attorney-client privilege under Roberts versus City of Palmdale. Now, if Mr. Mosher is interested in, or if anyone's interested in all the litigation pending against the city, we will be happy to provide the information that's not attorney-client to them. It's all of public record and subject to Public Records Act requests and we can provide that information, but this report truly is an attorney-client report just so the council can see in a global view everything that's going on. It's a very effective way for you to see the global view and I've done this since 1993 for all of the agencies I've represented and they found it beneficial.
Okay. Any other comment? All right, we'll adjourn to closed session.